We'll call our meeting to order with the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, Reverend Scurry, as you pray. I would ask you, remember our fellow councilman, Mr. Reader, and also the family of the Sheriff's Office and Ms. Jana Longshore, who passed away this afternoon. Would you keep them in those prayers, please?
Maybe by his, please. Father God, I stretch my hand to thee, knower the help I know. If thy withdraw that self from me, Father God, where would we all go? But now, God, we still thanking thee, holding righteous name, standing by all our side, encouraging us to right conscious to go forward. And do send your love out to all them standing definitely in need, God, especially to those that standing in need, God, and don't know they in need. Where is all your blessing and son, in Jesus' name? Amen.
Amen, amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'd like to welcome everyone to our work session this evening. Is there, item number one on our agenda is additions and deletions. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
No.
Hearing none is the emotion that we adopt the agenda as published. Motion by Mr. Hipps, second by Ms. Airwood, is their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor here by show of hands. And Mr. Reader, will you vote by voice?
Aye.
All right, good. That carries unanimously. Item number two is discussion of the FY 2022, 2023 budget. Mr. Iglesee.
Before we dive into the budget, we invited Mr. DeBose to brief counsel on the intergovernmental agreements with municipalities regarding parks and recreation, and a question about the special fund that's been proposed in conflict.
Okay. Yes. Let's get him off the clock. Just kidding, Theo. Yes, sir.
(inaudible) and thank you, Mr. DeBose. The question was posed to me about the proposal to operate parks and recreation with special fund, county system of accounts.
Thank you. And the question was posed about whether there are any legal impediments to that. I've discussed it with the county administrator, and I don't see any, frankly. You do have intergovernmental agreements with the municipalities in Newberry County. And just a brief bit of background, because I was involved in drafting those. The purpose of those agreements are twofold. Is one, and most important, is South Carolina law requires that the county have consent from municipalities before imposing a tax for certain services, where the county wasn't providing that service prior to March 7th in 1973. That's a portion of the Home Rule Act. For a number of years, for example, the county has had agreements with the municipalities on fire service. And when Mr. Adams was here, we worked for several years on different proposals for properly funding recreation service and the agreements that are in place. Now, I guess I'll say I drafted 95% of it, then Mr. Adams went and finished them out before he finished his time here. So the purpose of those agreements foremost is consent to the county to use its taxing power on a countywide basis, okay, to impose a tax for recreation services. The alternative to that, which may have been discussed with some of you several years ago, was creating a special tax district through the authority of the Home Rule Act, which would have left council with taxing power only in the unincorporated areas of the county. And that, then there would have been a much more complicated series of contracts with each municipality about people living in an unincorporated area paying service fees to play ball within a municipality and vice versa. But Mr. Adams was able to negotiate with all of the administrators in the other municipalities, this countywide contract. So that's the purpose of that contract. The exchange in that contract, there's always going to be an exchange in a contract. The other side of the bargain was to allocate the millage that the county did levy, so that the municipalities would feel like they were getting the portion that was extracted from taxpayers in their particular jurisdiction. That contract goes into great deal, and the reason is, is in South Carolina, we don't have line item levies for functions. We have a line item for general fund, operations and maintenance. We have a line item for debt service. But when a taxpayer gets their tax notice, they don't see each county function broken out with a separate millage, nor does your budget, or is at least it's not lawfully required for each county function to assign a separate millage. You just have a lump sum millage. So the purpose of that contract is to reverse engineer, if you will, look at the amount the county allocated in its tax budget to recreation and compare that to the total budget, and then come up with what I would call a notional millage figure for recreation. So the proposal, as I understand it, would be to levy countywide for recreation, just as you've been doing under those contracts, split up the money, just as you've been doing under those contracts, and then supplement that. It's the funds that the county gets for its program with some fee in lieu of tax dollars. And I don't see a problem with that. There's nothing in those agreements that doesn't allow the county to supplement its own efforts with other revenue sources. That's not what that contract is about, nor could the council contract away its ability to do that under South Carolina law. That remains in your purview. I certainly didn't see any unfairness in this either. Need to understand that the fee in lieu of tax revenue that this council can direct under the ordinance is currently in place. Is the county's share a fee in lieu. Each municipality in the county where it has taxing jurisdiction for the source of a fee in lieu project has already gotten its share. Your park agreement with Greenwood County states how fee in lieu is split up. And the fee in lieu share that the county gets, school district has already gotten its proportional share off the top. And if millage is derived from a property within a municipality, that municipality has already gotten its share. So where the county to start cutting up its share of the fee in lieu of tax payment, it would go in above and beyond what its existing ordinance says and would be moving fee in lieu tax monies into municipalities when that property's not in the municipality. So that's certainly not something that was contemplated by the agreements you have with any of the municipalities. So sum and substance, I think that's fine. I think it needs to be documented correctly, and I think that administrator's proposal works fine. Mr. Chairman, any questions?
Any questions from any member of council?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Why aren't each municipality responsible for their own recreation?
When it comes to fee. It's more of a policy matter than a legal matter. But I can say, and then you can add in, when we started negotiating these agreements, the thought was, first of all, the smaller municipalities outside of the city of Newberry have a problem fully funding recreation or increasing their budgets more accurately for recreation because of Act 388. If they want to step up their game, they really can't do that. The county already had this tax on. But it was also a thought of having cooperation, because, you know, kids want to play Little League, or play soccer, or play whatever it is. That's got nothing to do with jurisdictional boundaries. They just want to go to a program. And the thought was that these agreements would foster, on a formal basis, the type of cooperation that had been going on on an informal basis for a number of years. Mr. Iglesee, anything else?
I think the short answer is, they are, to some degree, responsible for delivering park services, and they're doing the best they can. And this is a way, like Mr. DeBose said, of collaborating and helping out as much as possible.
Mr. Reader, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, my question is, why do we pay the city such a big chunk in that grade?
Well, Mr. Reader, it's formula driven, and it's trying to, it's trying to arrive at the amount of money that is being paid by taxpayers in each of those municipalities to return it back to them. It's important to note that something that the county hasn't utilized, but is also in those agreements, is this allows the county to issue general obligation bonds on a countywide basis to fund recreational facilities, which you couldn't do. You're not forced to use that authority, but you do have that authority under this agreement, under these agreements, rather, to issue a general obligation bond to the county and get some capital for long-term improvements. So it's been of a trade-off, Mr. Reader. You've, the county's gotten the power to tax countywide, including the power to incur debt, to fund capital improvements for recreation. But the municipalities wanted to make sure they got a share of that tax back. And as I said, that was going on on an informal basis for a number of years, as I understood it. But Mr. Adams wanted to make it more formal and regular and in accordance with the Home Rule Act.
If I may address part of that, that was challenged by the town of Whitmire at one time in the past two years, three years, I think it was, and how the formula was designed. At that time, there was a formula put in place so that it would be equally distributed based on the populations and the taxes brought in by each municipality, if I'm not bad wrong. Am I correct, Theo?
It's something like that, but I think various administrators across the county had varying ideas on what that number should really be.
Correct.
And this puts it in blacks, this puts it in black and white.
Yes.
And in a real number.
Any other follow-up, Mr. Reader? Do we still have it? Anything else, Mr. Reader?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else hearing person? Theo, thank you so much for your time. You're always a wealth of knowledge and very appreciated in this county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My pleasure to be of service.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, next, it might be a good idea.
Hold on, did he cut it off?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I sent a memorandum out earlier today, hoping to give counsel something to work from in terms of the discussions today about potential events to the budget ordinance. I'm not sure what the objective is, based on past ordinances, past budget processes. I did put some things that would get you to a no tax increase if you choose to. What memorandum does is it gives you an option of either reducing the fund balance transfer, which would be a cash savings in the budget, or if you elect to, you can reduce the proposed 1.5 mil increase by making these amendments and cuts, or other cuts that you wish to do. So I thought I'd lay this out for you, for your discussion and for your use. But this would be a path to either reducing the fund balance transfer, which again, the Constitution requires that we raise enough revenues to cover our expenses. And we had a $1.3 million transfer in last year's budget to balance the budget. And so my goal, one of my goals in the budget process is to bring that balance transfer down for operations, so we're minimally impacting our reserve fund, so that we have that in case of an emergency or other need for it, and getting it back up, because we know it's under six months of reserves, and we want to tick that back up. So reducing reserve fund balance transfers in the budget is a goal that I had in our preparations. However, if you don't share that goal, you have the option of reducing the millage, and you could come to a no millage increase budget if you wish to. And then the memorandum also addresses the parks and economic development issues that were discussed at the last work session.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, since we were on that subject of the agreements, contracts with municipalities, and that's part of the parks and recreation in this memo that Mr. Iglesee sent out, could we address this before we went to the other items?
Tell me where you are, please.
We're at the bottom of page one, under Parks and Recreation, but at the top of page two, we have two offered options, I believe, if I'm understanding this correctly. One option is, we don't do anything any different than we're currently doing. And the other option, if I understand it correctly, is option two, which sets us up where we can grow our parks and recreation in the future without disincentivizing ourselves by having to pay additional money to the municipalities, because we would change the current agreement. Is that?
Yes, sir. The administrator's recommended budget includes setting parks and recreation up as a special fund outside of the general operating budget, kind of like airports is set up as a special fund outside of general operating budget. And in the budget ordinance document, and the corrected one that's dated 4/20, that was distributed last week at the meeting, it creates a special fund, I believe it's on page 14 of the ordinance, and it identifies four revenue sources for parks and recreation. The majority of it would come from ad valorem tax. And in my discussions with the city of Newberry, I had included $250,000 as a cap for the ad valorem tax portion of parks and recreation funding, and that would maintain the payout levels that are, that we currently are paying out to all the municipalities. So that, that number would be plugged into the formula, and that would preserve the status quo on the payouts to the municipalities. And then it goes on to say that grants could fund parks and recreation in the future, fees collected for programs could also fund, just like certain revenues in airports helps to fund the airport. And then $19,298 would come from unrestricted FLO funds for the difference above $250,000 to fund the parks program. And it's essentially, actually, the parks budget is, I think it's $24,000 less than last year's budget, primarily because of a vehicle purchase in last year's budget that's not in this year's budget. So there's no increase in parks and recreation budget for this year. There's a couple of small increases for umpires and insurance for the second vehicle, and maybe a small $200 bump for office supplies. But overall, the budget is down. But if this council, or a future council, wanted to make a significant investment in reaching out to rural areas and delivering programs like senior programs to gather together, and maybe the county partners with a community center, or a church, or the school district, not that we have to make big investments to buy large assets out in the rural areas, but if you wanted to fund some program opportunities, then you could make that investment, make it with unrestricted FLO fees, or with grant money, or with fees collected from new programming. And those other revenue sources would not be plugged into the formula for the payout to the city. So they would still get what they're getting today, but if you grew the program to half a million dollars, if you choose to, then you would not be sort of disincentivized to grow the program, because those additional revenue sources wouldn't be included in the formula.
So in accordance with your memo, you would like council tonight to give you direction between option one and two?
So the way it's drafted now is, the special fund is in there. So if you, the policy decision for council is if you want to keep it in the general fund and don't want to make any changes, then that would require an amendment, a motion, and a second, and a vote to amend the ordinance. And the motion would be, I move to amend the ordinance to remove parks and recreation from the special fund and place it back into the general fund. And then that motion would be seconded and voted on, and then we would, you know, make that change. And you wouldn't do the vote tonight in work session, but that would be a motion we could prepare for next week if you wish. If you, if you want the opportunity to potentially grow, then no motion or no action is needed.
Okay. That's what I needed to understand.
While we're here, let's kind of jump on what I said last time, and I would ask that we do it again, is let's kind of stay to a subject, finish that subject, and then move. My mind just functions better when we do that. And so, what little bit there is left. So let's, let's, are there other comments or questions about this?
I'm not against recreation. However, I'm against using recurring funds out of a FLO that can change. I've got the amount of FLOs that's come in the last years, and this year from last year with $400,000 less, because you have fees that drop off. We may have some that comes on, but it's, it's not a good idea to keep using for reoccurring items. If a business leaves, and we had that happen.
Caterpillar?
You may not get their, their amount that they're supposed to set. And it's just, in my opinion, a bad decision to put reoccurring items coming from FLO. I would like for it to be, the FLOs to be used. We talked about trying to have a project to fund capital items that we need, fire, rescue, big ticket items, and we don't want to, we want to get away from lease purchase. And the biggest amount of money we have that, like I said, it does fluctuate, would be fee in lieu. So I would like to see that program set up to maybe, what are we going to buy each year and use those funds, is what I think. And it may be that you could project, because we could figure out which ones are falling off or coming on, but we could maybe do something if we had to, even in a five-year stretch that, because we have a lot of items that we need. It's been brought to my attention that if we are, if we are a member of the National Fire Protection Agency, we have six or seven fire trucks that are going to be, they're older than 20 years old. So we've got a lot of other things, and I would rather see something like that, that is not a recurring item, be set up to use the fee in lieu.
Are we, are we currently using fee in lieu of four other recurring items in our budgets?
The only.
Other than the parks and recreation. I mean, is it, where is our fee in lieu of revenue being used currently?
Yes, sir. On the revenue budget sheet, the fee in lieu for fiscal year '22 was budgeted at $1,352,000. And if I'm reading this right, we expect a little bit more. And we have to, pursuant to Mr. DeBose's advice, we have to make a bond payment for an MCCP bond that basically refinanced, saved us some money, consolidated some bonds, I think, last year, two years ago.
Correct.
And that's a $450,769 payment. So the total FLO revenue coming to the county after the city gets, after the other parties get theirs, is almost one point, almost 1.4 million. But then we got to, we got to back out the $450,000. So the projection for this fiscal year is that there'll be $1 million, 6,515 in FLO revenue to the county. And so the proposal is to take $19,000 of that 1 million and dedicate it to parks, and then, you know, the rest of it would go into the general fund.
So it does go in the general fund. I guess what, I'm just kind of following what Mary was saying, though, but if we set all FLO aside for capital only, then currently, it's not only going to not fund the parks and recreation, but we're currently taking that FLO and putting it in our general fund and funding things that are recurring everywhere throughout our budget.
But it's not committed to any one particular thing?
No, it's just in the general fund.
All right. Question. How much did you say? $19,298?
Yes, that's what the budget ordinance.
And how exactly would that money be used?
Just the regular parks operational needs. There's no, there's no specific line item that would be committed to. But their budget is in the back of.
I saw that, yeah.
In the back of here, so just operational needs that would apply to their budget. There's no line item specific that.
So it's not guaranteed that it's going to help out the municipalities out in the county, Pomeria, Prosperity, Little Mountain, Whitmire, et cetera, then?
So.
Other than by services rendered?
So the parks programs that we have now would be maintained at the, at the current level, so we'll be able to continue to do what we're doing, which does benefit the municipalities. But where we're, I think where the deficiency is, or where the need is, is other places in the rural areas that we're not able to get to, because we're maxing out what we can do in baseball, and softball, and soccer, and camps and clinics with two people and a $260,000 budget. We can't reach Whitmire, and Chapels, and other places in the county that, if you ever wanted to grow the program with an investment, we would be able to do that. But not in this budget. This budget doesn't enable us to do anything more than what we're already doing. Does that answer the question, I hope? And I would say the municipalities get the lion's share of the benefit of what we do do, what we are doing in parks and recreation now.
So just for my clarification, whether we choose to amend the budget and accept item one, or no amendment, and it needed for item option two, the funding to the parks and recreation that's in the budget will not change regardless of which option we choose, correct?
That's right. Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're not growing the budget this year. In fact, it's going down this year.
And so you talk about future growth and the disincentive for future growth under option two, where no motions needed. But since we're not. option two where no motions needed, but since we're not planning future growth in this year, we could defer this decision between one and two until next year with no, basically no effect on us.
That is true.
Okay.
That would require an amendment to do that, to defer it next year.
And at this particular time, I don't feel comfortable enough knowing what's gonna happen. And I know $19,000 is not a lot of money, but I, I, I'd like to see exactly how we're talking about it. I mean, we're already talking about the money going down. I don't understand how the money's going down and we put 19,000 in. I guess I'm just not educated enough right now to make a decision on this, so.
Well, if it's not, you know, if it doesn't affect us this year and it doesn't affect the budget, then maybe we don't need, maybe we're stressing too much over this decision without any impact on us and we could, uh, do it like we have been doing it, which I guess would require the motion to amend in accordance with option one and we're back to the way we've been doing it and it's no net change and people have time to process and feel better about it.
Mr. Reader, anything you wanna come in with?
Well, my thing is, is with that, if you're gonna earmark that amount of money for recreation, it's gotta be stipulated. If you don't use it, then let it go to the general fund. But just to stick that, that specific amount out there without having a purpose, then that money could just be sitting there if we, if it's not gonna be specifically used for something, recreation.
Am I flawed in my law, logic in thinking that if we wanted to create this, um, uh, fee low project, that we don't have to do it as part of a budget? We could do that as a standalone item? Or does it have to be in the budget itself?
Yeah. I suppose it could be done mid-year with a budget amendment and three readings and a public hearing. Um, but it just makes sense to do it while we're in the midst of budget.
I, I am, uh, I, I hope that I had been a strong advocate for recreation. I love recreation. It's been one of my projects, but I'm of the mindset of the rest of council is if there's no pressing need, uh, I'd like some more time. I think we should maybe discuss with the towns within my jurisdiction that I serve and understand the impact on them as well. And so I, I would, based on what I've heard, I believe that we're asking you to prepare an amendment to remove that out for right now.
I get that, too.
Okay. Thank you. Doesn't change the budget for the recreation at all, correct?
Correct.
All right.
All right.
All right. With that being said, Todd, I know you said you wanted to address one issue at a time.
Yes, sir.
But at the last council meeting, when it, we actually went 3-3 tie failed and we revisited it. And then Christopher Iglesias actually said that, uh, he would, that was his budget. He would expect us to make the amendments. Uh, and then late this afternoon, we received this. Now, I put a good bit of time into looking at what I thought would be the best interest of this county going forward and trying to make sure that we look at the taxpayers. So I've got a whole outline here and I'm gonna read it out if that's okay?
Go ahead.
And then we can discuss each one of them individually as however we may need to see fit.
That sounds fine.
And further detail, if that's okay.
Yep.
Again, we're, we're talking about a CPA and a CFO at $103,000 in additional budget money. That's just salary. That's not, that's not, um, fringe benefits, et cetera. Um, Debbie, Karen have done a phenomenal job over the years without the CPA, CFO designation behind their names. And I know it's a lot of work. I, I know, but they had, they have made it work for over 14 years. Um, I don't think this is the year where we go for $103,000 plus benefits, uh, for a job. When Debbie, and at her time, when she decides to retire, maybe we should pursue somebody with the CFO, CPA background at that particular time. And hopefully, right now, we're just kind of picking a salary out of the, the air about what we want to pay this person. Uh, we have not looked to see whether there are like counties of ours that currently have these positions of, of like size. Now, I mean, when you go to Greenville, Spartanburg, Lexington, uh, Beaufort, Charleston, some of those counties, maybe so. Uh, but I don't think we should move forward with that per, per the amount of money that we're talking about there. I mean, if it's worked for 14 years, I think in one of the dissertations here, it was made comment to in this recent, um, thing that we got today, that the, um, economic development facility had operated without this person for a year. Well, guess what? Uh, the county administrator's office has operated this position for 14 years without this position. So, uh, we're talking about possibly knocking out a $40,000 contracted service for 103 plus. Numbers don't make sense for me from the standpoint. Uh, the clerk of council salary that was moved to the administrative office some years ago because it was looking for some supervision for the person that was operating that, that money was moved to the administrator's pocket of money. Now that we're going back and hiring that position for county council itself, that we're going to be strictly the ones responsible for, that money needs to be transferred back from the administrator's budget back over to the county council money where it originally derived from. Um, and then if admin needs assistant, I, I can get part of that possibility of needing an assistant, but we had a human resources person who was doubling as a payroll specialist and an HR person. We're talking about hiring a payroll specialist is my understanding now, which would be another new position. And I got no problem with that because I think for the checks and balances and, and all, we need a payroll specialist. But if the human resources person was doing both payroll and human resources, I don't think the payroll job is going to be technically a full-time job. So therefore that position could be part of, and, and, and I guess you'd say cross-trained to be an admin assistant to the administrator and payroll specialist. That will save the taxpayers dollars. As far as the economic development position, uh, Bobby Hitt, who used to be Secretary of Commerce, just prior to this, when it came on board, one of his favorites saying was loose lips sink ships. This is not a place for interns when you don't know what calls coming in could be potentially. Uh, you don't need somebody. I, I'll go back to, I think, when the Walmart distribution center was looked at being located here. Sam Walton himself came to Newberry County. Word got back to him in his hometown before he got back that somebody had already loose lipped and talked about it. And guess where it is? It's in Lawrence County, not in Newberry County. I think economic development is a thing that is, um, important enough when you look at the fee in lieu of money that we were talking about a while ago. Where does that money come from? Economic development. Where do the jobs come from? Economic development. Where did the supposedly 1,000 new jobs that's coming into our county come from? Economic development. Uh, if that position is not thought enough of to be funded, I don't know what else could potentially be. I mean, it, it has the most opportunity to increase our ta, tax base and provide jobs for our citizens. And when you look at where we have come per hourly base to where we are now, um, Mr. Farmer has done a tremendous job. But Mr. Farmer, he, and along with a few others of us, went to Korea for at least, I think it was 10 days. And if Mr. Farmer is called to go back to on a recruiting mission and that position out there is left, that building is left locked for 10 days. Uh, and, and if he's gonna nurture the building, the, the businesses that we currently have, he can't be in that office all the time. And if you've got another Samsung, if you've got GT Tire, any of those people making a call and we don't have the right person out there with the right knowledge, we could lose that. I, I'm, I'm just, you know, again, the money's already in the budget. We've just done a shell game and moved it somewhere else to try to put in another position that I don't exactly know where that money has gone to actually fund. Okay. Point being, I don't think that's one we need to give up. The other one that's in there, again, I am perfectly okay with the IT person. I am perfectly okay with the 3% for employees because I do think we need to take care of our current employees. Um, probably even more than 3%. And I'll get back to that in a minute. The grant writer. Um, and let me go back and also say, after last week's comments, I got quite a few calls from quite a few people, uh, pleased with trying to protect the taxpayer dollars. Um, I might be running on a Democratic ticket and I'm not trying to be political here, but we ain't Washington. Excuse my grammar. We can't print money like Washington's printing and just throwing it out there in the streets and all. Uh, we've got to protect our taxpayers as much as we possibly can. As far as a grant writer, I was told, it was asked by, and not sure, but it was asked by, were there enough grants written that would justify the salary? Well, first of all, we don't have a grant writer, so therefore, no, there was not enough grants written to justify. That particular person who's a business person in this community said, maybe the question should be, how many grants did we miss that would have justified the salary of a grant writer? I, I don't know. I don't think anybody else can answer either one of those questions because we don't have one. But when we look at things, we've got, uh, EMS, law enforcement, fire people back here. We've got grants that are out there that could help improve the equipment and, uh, help with the, to protect the fire EMT and law enforcement people, whether it be vest, whether it be whatever. Uh, there, there's a lot that those people could be. A, as any of you know that's been paying attention to the news, we've had an escalation in crime and shootings and all. There are grants for community-based policing and we could have officers possibly stationed in some of these areas through grants with that. Even though I'm willing to sacrifice on the grant writer, I do it very reluctantly because I think the providing safety is a core responsibility for us as council members. And I think anytime we have a chance to bring more money to serve the people who are serving our people, I, I think that's kind of negligent on our part not to, um, do that. Um, now, the other thing that I, I wanted to address, I said I would address it for as our county employees, we were told that, and I, I'm pretty certain, 99% certain, that we can use the American Rescue Funds to, uh, support our EMS, our law enforcement, our county employees. I think it's a two-year appropriation. We've already made one appropriation. Uh, I would like to see us give a bonus to all of our employees, thinking somewhere around $3,000 out of that American Rescue Fund to help cover the gap of what, um, the, um, cost of living has been. We gave them 3%, but then, you know, you're still got a pretty good gap there when you talk about 3% versus 6 to 8%, which is our national economy is showing and all of us can feel it at the pumps and all of us can feel it at the grocery stores. Also, when you go to look at our volunteers who give their time, they don't only give their time, they give their vehicles and they give their vehicles gas. Uh, and, and I really feel like we need to minimally give those who qualify 15, at least $1,500 in the American Rescue Fund money to do that. Now, again, I know that sounds like some stuff, but y'all, the administrator is asking for a 38% increase in the administrator's budget. Folks, all the other departments, and if you want me to go through here and read, uh, that one went up $309,000, the administrator's budget. Um, may have the wrong one here, but most of them went down or either, uh, here's one, let's see. Planning and zoning, 306, it went up to 359. That's one of the few that went up. Uh, registration election, 223, went up to 247. Um, GIS, I think it was, went from 123 to 134. Uh, there's one went down from 215 to 205. All of them are around, if you look at them, 278 down to 275, 130 down, the state at 13407, 197, 742 remained constant with probate court. Um, I, I guess my frustration is why can 38% stay with Santa Claus? I mean, if Santa Claus is getting all the presents, it ain't much of a Christmas. And with that being said, I do think we still need to address the public defender and potentially the, um, the balancing side of that with a one-year only, I don't, just to let them catch up. But other than that, uh, I, I did spend a lot of time trying to write this up when he kindly asked the other night that he would not be presenting another amendment that would be up to us. So I did spend a lot of time. So that's my words. Now y'all can debate it however you want.
Okay. I think I bullet pointed them and if I miss one as we go through them, I want you to call me out on it. So, um, the first one I bullet pointed was the CPA, CFO. Uh, and so we would open the floor. Mr. Livingston had his say, would let others address that.
I too don't have a problem with the CPA, but it needs to be, I think, when, uh, our financial director decides that she's retiring. Uh, I don't mind a small overlap, but, um, if we want to get a CPA, I think that is the time.
Mr. Chairman, I also think the time is right for us to have a CPA. We've, we have not had, uh, we've had issues with our auditor being able to come in here and being able to audit our books, uh, because they weren't in, quote, an auditable form at that time. We ended up paying an additional $40,000 to get them in an auditable form. Um, we have excellent staff that have done a great job. We can't wait, um, until our existing expertise leaves to bring on because we do need that, that overlap. And it's, history's already proven to us that hiring is not an overnight process. We have had to, we've got several positions open now that's taken us quite a while to fill. And so even if we posted the job, as soon as this, this is our, uh, budget that becomes effective beginning 1st of July, if we posted the job at that time, based on some preliminary work that might need to be done and, and interviews, oh, we, we might be lucky to get a, a hire in six months. Uh, so in essence, actually, the money that, that we have budgeted, if it's a full-year budget, could be reduced because we're not gonna have somebody on July 1, we're not gonna have a CPA. So if we were to authorize a CPA under this budget, just given the time that it's taken, I would expect that it's probably gonna be close to six months that we could even hire one.
As presented though, this CPA was gonna take over a lot of operate, uh, other offices.
I know, after we hire them, but I'm just saying, Mary, it's-
I think we're saying that the CPA needs to, uh, replace our financial director when she does, that it's not an additional job. It will replace her job.
Right.
And not be over all these other departments.
And I don't know about the intricacies right now of what the job responsibilities will be and, and how it's, you know, our administrator, um, delegates all the financial responsibilities to whether there'll be Karen and the CPA. I, I don't know about all that, but I'm just saying from a budgeting aspect, we could probably reduce the amount of money in the budget for the CPA because we're not gonna have a CPA on July 1. And we do need to have some overlap between the CPA and when our financial director leaves.
So you're saying this position would replace her position, not being additional?
And it's my understanding that this is a new position, but when she leaves, that's when the decision will need to be made. Do we need to hire somebody else? Is that, I mean, the budget right now has budgets for the salary for a finance director, does it not?
Correct.
Does this budget also budget a full-year salary for CPA?
It does for the full, full year.
So actually, that is not going to occur.
I agree.
That's gonna, uh, if our individual, if Debbie retires when she, sometime during the year, then some of those funds won't be used. And until we hire a CPA, we won't be using those funds allocated to the CPA.
This is the job description right here and it says directs, executive level, professional duties, um, manage human resources, assessor, financial director, recreation purchasing director and others assigned. That's a total added job not to replace. That's a total added job not to replace her.
That is, that is the intention, is to add a position. And if you remember the existing, uh, organizational chart.
Yeah, I remember that, but I think that's going to be a little bit slower than you wanted at first because we got to do it as our county grows. We can't jump out there and have, um, all these jobs until we, we can afford them or as we can grow. I mean, you can only do it a little bit by a little bit. We can't jump out there and, and hire fifteen people, um, like was projected. We just got to bite off a little piece each year.
This is that first bite, and, and when I observe the workloads in that office, it, it dictates the need for another position. Um, especially losing somebody who can do things efficiently and quickly, uh, but still works sixty-plus hours a week. Um, and, and Karen's workload, I mean, I'm, I'm there every day observing the workload. We need to elevate both what is being produced, but we also need to relieve the valve of the burden that they've been carrying. And that's why there's a need for an additional position. Now, I, I will say, and I talked about this with a couple of you individually, as things get restructured, I, I do think there will be additional savings in the department overall because in addition to not having to spend forty-one thousand dollars on contract services, as there's a loss in a, due to a retirement and there's some shifting, then there's room for an entry-level position. So we wouldn't have to rehire at the high level. We could rehire a mid-level or entry-level position, which would be another twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars plus in savings. So when you add that to the forty-one thousand dollars in savings by not having to contract out, we're already at seventy thousand dollars of the salary. And if what Mr. Hip is saying is, what if we budget for half the year for it in this particular budget, then we'd still have to make up the difference because it would be a full position, but it would only be making up the difference between about seventy thousand dollars and whatever the salary ends up being. And yes, we did budget it high because we want to get somebody with high level of experience, with government experience, that's handled multimillion-dollar budgets, and it's going to be hard to do that at ninety thousand dollars. When we do know, we have done some comparisons, and we've looked at salaries in the hundred and five thousand dollar range. And if we budgeted a little bit more than that to be able to attract somebody with the kind of, and may, and realistically, the offer probably wouldn't be that high. But we did want to budget for a quality candidate with like-kind experience in government finance. Um, and I, I thought, I, I was under a clear understanding that that was desirable. You know, now I'm getting mixed messages. Prior to now, I did not feel like there were mixed messages about the need for strong financial leadership in the county. I was under the impression that council was ready to move forward with this hire and that I was putting in the budget you, you all's wishes as was expressed to me in December and January. Um, but now that seems to not be the case. So, uh, you, you tell me what you want, if you want to budget for half a year, but absolutely, based on my observations, the workload dictates an additional position. We don't have as many positions in finance as other like-sized counties. And, uh, it's, it's, it's hard to watch the workload and the burden on these folks and not be willing to advocate for a new position because it's desperately needed.
But per the job description, it's relieving the administrator of more of his responsibility than it is helping the Department of Finance because it's a recreation, it's, uh, it's four or five different things. I, I, I looked at it, that, that, that is actually relieving the responsibilities of, um, it's not focusing really on, uh, the finance.
You could hire five more people and you won't relieve the responsibilities of the administrator. I will still have to manage the CPA slash CFO. And yes, putting a few of the financially heavy departments under their supervision makes a lot of sense if they are that, that credentialed. And quite frankly, as was discussed previously, having that many direct reports is a recipe for burnout. And we need help on that level. We need help on the administrative level. We need help for a strong financial leadership position. And that would include supervising some of our most financially, you know, intricate departments. And that's not going to relieve, I'm still going to be working sixty hours a week, twelve, thirteen-hour days. And, but it's going to free me up to assist planning and building and zoning and public works and kind of get her out to the other parts of the organization and help with operational needs and do other things and not have my time completely taken up by financial needs by having this person here. You can, you can utilize my strengths, which are in other aspects of county government, by being able to have strong financial leadership to lead these departments and relieve a little burden on them, relieve a little burden on me. Although I say that, the fact is, I'm still going to be working as hard as I am now. It's just I'll be able to focus in other areas of the organization.
Have you had any, uh, job resumes for the, um, payroll specialist?
We have, and we made an offer, and the offer was initially accepted, but then the employer sweetened their offer, and so we lost that candidate. So we've got to go back and keep interviewing.
And when is our clerk?
There's a theme in our personnel issues. We're, we're making hires, we're making offers, we're losing candidates. Um, and it's hard to be competitive. Um, and so, yeah, there's some big salaries here, but there's some big responsibilities.
When is the clerk to council to report?
That one we haven't lost this time around, so we expect her to start May ninth, I believe. May sixteen.
That'll take off.
That will.
Quite a bit of burden there.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman. How we took time and studied what our county was going to put out to us, look over what he got for us and see his cuts holding tax down. It wouldn't mean a lot to us. He moved money about, we complained the last time, he moved money anywhere he could to keep taxpayers down. I think we should study this way of giving us for our self-conscious and for our county and move forward. I think he did a wonderful job. I studied it. I came in early today and got a copy. I looked at it and had legal assistance, and I was totally with him. Now, what should we always study that and look into the good he has tried to do for the county, not for itself, for Newbury County, and move forward? Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Reader?
Basically, I, uh, I, I was listening to what everybody had to say. I could truly understand, uh, because I, I do believe, I remember that Debbie and Karen had looked at another position to come in to help them out a few months ago. And we decided to put that position on hold until we got the new county administrator. So I'm fully aware that they do need some assistance. But as, as, as far as having a position of a hundred and three thousand as well as a, a, another position that's almost at a hundred thousand dollars, I don't think, uh, the county can do that right now. I, I can do with the, the hundred and three thousand position and an entry-level position which won't cost the county as much. So I think we need, we need to look at saving the county as much as we possibly can and also having enough people to, um, to work that particular, work the finance office. So I'm not saying do away with the, the CFO position, but I can do the CFO position with an entry-level position. And I think that, that would help the finance department out great.
Mr. Reader, thank you for that. Um, that, and that is, that is exactly the intention, my intention. It just, just be aware that there's, that there's going to be an overlap, an overlapping period. Um, but by the end of this fiscal year, that will, that will sort of level off. And that's exactly what I intend to make happen, is that after the retirement, there's a CFO in place, there's a finance director in place, and then, uh, basically Karen's position would be open, but instead of it being an executive-level position, it would be a mid-level or entry-level position. So there would be additional savings once that happens.
So are we saying we are now talking about a CFO, CPA, and another position?
No, sir. It would be one additional position to the existing finance staff, CPA position. That's what's proposed and that's what's budgeted. And this, this budget pays for it. This budget provides the funding for it.
But where does that money come from? Wh- wh- doesn't that part of that money not come from the economic development position that we're so-called doing away with?
I, I wouldn't say it comes from there at all. I would say it comes from increased fees in the transfer station, increased fees at building and planning and whatever savings. And sure, we saved a little, we saved thirty thousand dollars in economic development, so that helps balance the budget. It comes from fund balance. Uh, it, it comes from the revenues available to balance the budget.
I'll just say I'm not willing to support it until we have the, you know, when, when Debbie decides to retire, and this is no way pushing Debbie because Debbie has been a main staple of this county for quite some time. Uh, uh, if we would need to do an amendment at the midterm, whenever that comes forth, I'll be willing to do it then. I'm not willing to approve it in the budget as it exists currently.
And we'll, we have a, a pattern of losing people and going into crisis mode, and that's what, that's what this is trying to avoid. Uh, we have, you know, Irvin leaving. Uh, we, we got, you know, between the two of them, sixty years of experience in the county. Um, and every time we lose somebody, it's extremely burdensome on the existing staff. And there's no stipends and additional pay that goes out to them. It's just people who care that step up and help bridge the gap. And, and succession planning is, is trying to avoid that crisis.
As you're speaking, Irvin's, Irvin's leaving. Uh, that's going to be a position that we're going to have to pay probably more money than we're paying Irvin now.
The plan is, if you approved IT director, that we can hire a facilities manager that's got property maintenance, property management experience, and we can do that for under what his salary is now. Because remember, he's doing, he's liaison for IT, I think he's making about ninety thousand dollars. I think we can get a property manager-type position for about seventy thousand. Um, but that takes IT out of facilities, puts IT in IT, and allows facilities to focus on buildings and maintenance. But there's no justification for a ninety thousand dollar salary if they're not also doing IT work. So I, I would expect savings on that position.
Possibly, I don't know. A good IT person would offer ninety thousand dollars.
On the IT side, that's budgeted for a six-figure salary. Um, but again, the facilities manager would not be burdened with that, so they wouldn't have to, we, we wouldn't have to pay them ninety thousand dollars.
And, uh, I, I agree that we do need a CPA, uh, but I'm more on the line of, I prefer to wait until Debbie has a more specific time when she's leaving and have a little overlap and pay the full amount right now as well. Just due to the fact that we've got other needs.
But my only comment to that, Nick, is, uh, we've got to put the money in the budget now to have it, um, available to hire the CPA when that time comes. Because we can't, um, raise a, uh, the millage mid-year because then it's time to hire, hire the CPA. And then we do a, a budget amendment at that time to increase revenues. So we need to budget the revenues. There is no legal commitment for us that if we budget the money, that we have to spend it. We need to, I think all of us realize, we can budget the money here, and then if we choose not to hire the person till halfway through the year or three-quarters of the way through the year, we will have that money available to us. It goes into the general fund, but it's available. But if we don't budget it, and then we decide to hire somebody mid-year, where do the funds come to pay them? Uh, so that's kind of my concern. I would prefer, we're, we're, each one of us kind of giving your, your wishes. I, I would like to see us eliminate grants writer unless we can show that, uh, it, it can subsidize itself, eliminate the parks master plan, eliminate the yard container for a one-mill reduction, and leave the CPA and the IT director in our budget. And then even with that being done, we can revise the budget. Uh, as I said, the CPA is not going to come on staff at July one. So if we need to contract some grant writing to be done, we can do a budget amendment and move funds that we've budgeted from, uh, to the CPA to, say, a grants writing. If, if I've said anything that's incorrect, uh, please correct me.
Not as far as I'm concerned. Uh, all of that, um, is, is reasonable.
We just need to have some flexibility, and I think we have flexibility if we put it in the budget and don't use it. But if we don't put it in the budget, we don't have that same flexibility to raise revenue mid-year.
A budget amendment can be made at any given time during the year, if I'm not bad wrong. It may would have to be pulled out of, um, fund balance, and then it could be budgeted in for a millage increase if it needed the following year. But we don't have to put it in just to have money to make a, a budget amendment.
But the point is, you, you wouldn't be able to do a mid-year millage increase.
Correct, but you could pull whatever.
You would have to then, uh, do the millage increase the following year if you continued, if you needed it.
And I still have two questions. Where's the money going that was used for clerk to council at one time that's, uh, that should be just transferred back over? And again, still, where's the money that needs to be in, uh, the economic development budget for that position?
On the clerk to council, I, I don't know. I wasn't here. I, I, I'm not sure I understand what happened. There weren't ordinances moving money. Things happened with or without councils. I, I can't comment. I wasn't here, I have no idea.
The only thing I'm asking is that money that was moved over in that particular part of the budget, which is here, be moved back to county council under their, uh, budget. And, and just do away with the additional that's being put in there for county council. It, it needs to just be transferred back. It was originally under county council, and then when it needed supervision, again, no, you were not here, but it was moved over to, um, just because of supervisory needs, moved over to the county administrator's budget. Now it needs to be moved since, if we're going back with a full-fledged clerk to council, it needs to be moved back to clerk, to clerk to council.
So you want to defund administrator's assistant to be able to do that?
Yes.
Oh, and I would agree with what Buddy said. Uh, we need a clerk to council that reports to council, and therefore, the clerk to council's, uh, salary should be under council's budget. And so I would agree with you there.
Well, so what this does is it funds that position in council's budget, but it doesn't defund the administrator's assistant position? Or what Mr. Livingston suggested is that you, you take away the administrator's assistant funding so that I don't have any help?
No. Earlier I said, if you were listening correctly or closely, I said that you would take the payroll specialist, who obviously not have enough to be full, full-time, and utilize it any way you want in your department, whether it be to help with finance or help with admin, whatever. That's fine. And the other thing is, if we need the. That's fine. And the other thing is, if we need the interns that we were talking about for, um, economic development, then hire interns to go get the mail, to file it, to, to, to file whatever you need instead of putting an intern in economic development where, again, loose lips, same chips. Put it in, into the admin office where you could use it as needed. Great opportunity to partner with Newbury College with some of the business students, et cetera. Even if you need help with some of the stuff in finance temporarily.
So the payroll coordinator's job description includes support to the HR director for workers' comp and, um, insurance, IRF premiums, the things that were slipping through the cracks and not getting done. So they, there's a full-time job description for that, which will support HR so that HR can do the recruiting that needs to get done, to fill the positions that aren't getting filled, to update the employee manual, to, uh, work with the retirees, give them all the, all the service they need to facilitate training for managers and employees and to help with our safety training to keep our insurance premiums down, to do all those, all those things that HR should be focused on. The payroll coordinator job description includes support tasks to enable that to be done. So there's, there's no room for them to, on a part-time basis, be an assistant to the administrator. And quite frankly, I'm so busy that I need a full-time assistant. And, uh, that certainly would be expected of a chief administrative officer of a county to have that available to them. So, um, I, I'm not sure where that's coming from. But it just, it's funded. The clerk to council position's fully funded. The administrator's assistant's fully funded in this current posi, in this current budget. But if, if you want to take it away, then that's your prerogative.
But when you say fully funded, um, the one step was to remove the funding to council for the clerk to council. And that's not a problem. I mean, the current budget as presented has the clerk to council's, um, salary listed under county council or under administration. I thought I.
It was an added amount.
We didn't get the money back.
Clerk to council was not in, under clerk to council prior to. It was under administrators. Only thing I'm asking is the money that was taken when, I guess you, if you want me to, I mean, I don't mean calling, calling names is a problem. But when Laurie went from clerk to council to being supervised by Mr. Adams at the time, the money shifted under to the administrator's budget. Only thing I'm saying is that money that was obligated and delegated for that position, now that we are going back with our own independent clerk to council, that money needs to come back to us and not be additional monies.
Sure. That money needs to come back for the clerk to council. Now, if there's also in here, and, and I don't want to go into the, maybe we need to talk about if there is an additional person already also in here that reports to him, then that's not, that's not germane to the money reporting to us for the clerk to council. I'm in agreement with that.
But then that, that's other position is at the expense of economic development.
See, now then, that's where you and I would differ. Because here, we've got a situation where the administrator, who we're paying, and we offered great support too when we hired him, is saying, I need some assistance in my organization, but I don't need it in economic development. I've talked with my economic development director. There are other avenues to support that department. I don't need it there. I need it over here. And if we're now micromanaging, that, that's kind of, he's telling us, this is where I need it and this is where I don't need it. And now we're telling him, no, this is where you need it that you said you don't need it. That's, that's micromanaging his organization, I think, beyond our, the best job we can do. I think we need to. He took, he comes to us and, and justifies why he doesn't need a position. And we're arguing that we want to fund it. That confuses me.
And Les, I, I, in a way, I agree that we don't need to micromanage. I do have a little bit of knowledge about economic development in Newbury County. And I certainly don't see how one person is handling it. With what we got going on, what's come, what could be coming and what we got here. Plus, I think our economic development needs to be transferring to workforce development. And I think that's gonna take more than one person. Again, that is kind of the sort of micromanaging where we maybe shouldn't be, but that's just my two cents worth about.
Well, it, it, sure. We all got our opinions and probably none of us are completely right or none of us are completely wrong. But it just is a little strange when we have the department director and the administrator telling us that I can do this job with this resource. And we're telling them, no, you can't. We need to throw more resource at you. And, and anyway.
Well, I know Rick well enough to know that Rick is extremely passive. And he'll do whatever he's asked to do regardless of what the situation is. And I, I just feel like when we're looking at providing more opportunities and more jobs for the citizens of this county, that is one department that does not need to be short-changed. We got quite a few other department heads out here that need people. And that's not even being discussed. We're only discussing one department's many, many needs at thirty-eight percent increase. And I, I, you know, again, uh, being a steward of the taxpayer dollars and trying to look out for my constituents in, in the tough times that they're going through with the cost of living and everything else, I'm just not willing to go out here and just start paying. I mean, when we had, when we had the administrator's position open, Newbury Now was in there saying a hundred thousand dollars was more than we needed to pay for a county administrator. And, and then, you know, well, good Lord, look how that, how that hornet's nest was stirred up back in the time. I mean, it, it went crazy. It was, if you look, go back and look at the string of stuff that was in that Newbury Now, people not wanting and not feeling that we need to pay the monies that we paid for a county administrator. And now we're talking about paying other positions more than what the people in Newbury Now said we needed to be paying the county administrator. I, I mean, again, I mean, you gotta answer to your constituents. I'm just trying to ask you about.
And I can, I can live with a, you know, the proposed was one point five mill increase. I could certainly live with a point five mill increase and eliminate one of that mill increase. And then that's. But we, we are certainly offered more information. Let me tell you, uh, uh, none of us here are gonna be happy one hundred percent with the results, I don't think. Of what, when we finish this budget, nobody's gonna be totally thrilled about everything. But we gotta, we gotta put together a budget that we can operate our county on. I've talked way too much. I'll let somebody else talk.
Mr. Shealy, um, the, the, we're working as diligently as we can to get that strategic planning process moving. We've received four RFP responses for the consultant. And we have also received four applications for the task force that will distribute out to council for appointments as we get them. And, and you may be right. Maybe we need to be focused on workforce development. It's, you know, my charge is to implement policy and legislative directives of council. And I don't have one. And that's part of the pause and just sort of saying, let's get through the strategic plan. And on the back end of it, we'll know with some clarity what the directive is and what the personnel needs are. And in fact, the RFP kind of goes into this consultant assessing that depending on what the objectives and the direction that we get. They'll tell us, you know, maybe we need two people. Maybe, you know, and what skill set are we looking for to fill that position? And, and that's, that's, that's the intention here is to just wait till we have that policy directive. Because in the meantime, we're just kind of guessing what y'all want. And we hear conflicting things like we often do, um, where council members might want this, another council member might want that. And I outlined that in the memo today. So, um, that's sort of the difficult seat that we're sitting in. And we're very hungry to get through the other side of the strategic planning process. And it may very well say what you said, or it may say something totally different. But without it, we're just kind of, just kind of guessing.
And I realize that. And we do have to have a budget prior to it. I totally agree.
Well, I agree. And I, I think what you're talking about, having a budget and having a plan, having whatever. But I think, when's the salary study supposed to be completed?
We've got the RFPs.
The responses are coming back, I think, on the ten.
Once we select somebody, they, they have a six-month timeline to complete it. So hopefully by the end, before the end of the year, maybe third quarter of this year.
Because I guess, again, I look at it, we're pulling numbers out of the head. I mean, you know, randomly as far as these positions and stuff. And again, Debbie, Karen, when did we have an audit that was suspended because of y'all's performance or whatever?
This current year was a little slow in getting completed.
Was that because of you or Karen?
No.
Okay. I was just thinking it was not something that was caused by.
It was some balancing issues, um, with some accounts in the treasurer's office, but they were resolved. And that had to do with the, the global and the just, it's, it's, it won't be out here. When we stopped doing fees, they were commingled, I don't want to say commingled, but the, they didn't send Karen the same amount that was withheld out of the bank statement. So that took a long time to, to resolve.
So we didn't really meet any, miss any state deadlines or requirements?
No, that was, um, we were just a little late.
Than what we normally were.
Ten days would, we'd have been late.
And, and again, I know the last meeting, it was made to comment that this is so much farther ahead of what we had last year. We didn't have a county administrator last year. So Debbie, Karen, I really appreciate y'all keeping us as well on track as y'all were last year, when we really didn't have any guidance and leadership at the time. So just want to make that clear too. But I still haven't really, I don't feel like I've gotten answers is where that money for that position has gone and where the Taylor's money has gone, uh, or maybe we don't know where it's going.
There's not, it's not like a, like a video game where we move something into one place. We, we have to balance the budget and there's a lot of variables that go into that. So one of the variables that went into balancing the budget was trying to keep our fund balance transfer as low as we can. And that twenty-nine thousand dollars in savings from economic development was part of that formula. It wasn't like I took twenty-nine thousand dollars and put it in another line item. That's not how the process worked.
So you're saying we were only paying the person out at economic development twenty-nine thousand dollars?
No, we were paying them forty-four thousand dollars, but we put in fifteen thousand for the interns. So the, the savings to the bottom line was twenty-nine thousand dollars. That would be what we'd have to make up if, if at the end of the strategic plan, we needed a, an administrative assistant, forty-four thousand dollars, we'd have to make up twenty-nine thousand next year.
Okay. We're gonna go back. Um, we, we've kind of kicked around several down the list. I think we're through at, at least preliminary. I think we've got to come back to them to make a decision. Uh, economic, IT person. Is there any discussion on the IT person?
I'm good with that.
Desperately needed in this.
We're good with that.
Yes. First part of the three percent will come to the other part. I noted them separately because you said them separately. So just bear with me. I hadn't forgotten it. So three percent per employee. Are there any issues on that? I just, I'm, couldn't say more. I wish it, I wish it could be more. And I think Mr. Livingston's got a grand idea that I'm planning on supporting when we get there. Uh, and I, and I like doing it as a flat rate instead of a percentage because that kind of evens it out to some of the folks that don't make as much as others. Uh, they'll still get that same amount. And so I'm, I'm certainly in favor, in favor of that when we get there. Grant writer. Um, let's begin talking about that.
Hasn't all of the, um, different departments been writing their own grants?
To my knowledge, that's correct. Tommy? Um, I know the sheriff's office has. Is anybody up for any grants? We got a lot of department heads here. You do it yourselves?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. My, my, I used to do this. I, I don't know how many grants I, I wrote, uh, at one point in my life and hope I never have to write another one, much less manage another one. My, my point is, just getting a grant is only the beginning of an incredible cycle of managing what you got, of accounting for it. There's quarterly reports, there's, uh, equipment reviews where they want to lay, they want everything laid out on the floor when they come in and see, did you buy what you said you bought and all those kind of things? And so, uh, but I can tell you, uh, lots of nice things, laptops in cars and all sorts of things like that. Uh, we got a boat off a grant one time. Technology and all that stuff. There's a lot of stuff out there in the grant world. And, and I believe that, th- this is just my opinion. I haven't spoke a lot on these others, but I intend to. But, um, I, I believe a grant person could pay for themself easily, particularly, um, if we could at least temporarily combine them. Because the other thing this county needs desperately is a public information officer. Someone who helped manage our websites, someone who could be a face when things are going on. Social media is where it's at. Whether we like it or not, that's where it's at. And so I, I, I would like to see some conversation and at least considering, um, having this person be a slash. Because if you're a grant writer, you've got to be able to spread some manure around, quite honestly. And so sometimes that's what PIO is all about.
I agree. A, a grant writer can definitely pay for himself ti- several times over if they, uh, putting their, putting their mind to it and, and going out there and getting all the grants that they can get for the different things. Uh, we got fiber grants to the potential, uh, any kind of, there's, there's grants all over for everything. So that's, that, it could pay for itself over and over.
And if it's not in two years? It exits.
We could, we could not fund that position moving forward.
Do that anytime, but, um, as an alternative, we do have appointments set up with grants consulting companies. We don't have a lot of information at this time, but they, these two companies in particular are focused on, um, the recent infrastructure bill passed by Congress. And they are pursuing those funds for local governments. And so we're looking forward to those consultations. But, um, that, that is an alternative if you're not ready to fund the position this year. I, I do caution against combining jobs.
I know.
Grant.
I know.
I mean, we have a habit of doing that and, and, or have, have had a habit of doing that. And, um, just something I would caution against.
As one of my heroes, Dave Ramsey, says, when you do two things, you do two things poorly. And so, uh, but I do think that's where we're at right now, unfortunately.
How do these contract companies work?
We don't have all the information yet. We've got, I think, two, two set up? Do we have two, the second one set up?
I have none set up.
Okay. We're working on a second one. But one's out of Washington DC and the other one's out of Charleston. But it is, I wouldn't call it a commission base, but they're. one's out of Charleston, but it is, I wouldn't call it a commission base, but they're kinda like our alliance consulting we, we do now, they've pursued grants and we've been the beneficiary of it, but they've also gotten the contract for the engineering work.
So no, no idea of cost?
No, but it wouldn't be a out-of-pocket cost to us, it would be based on.
It can be, I do peer reviews for Department of Justice on law enforcement grants still, um, and a lot of times what they'll do is they'll build their initial fee in, but then if you want them to manage the grant, you have to pay them out of pocket to manage that grant, so.
That's what I expect these two.
Yes, that's, that's the typical pattern, so that, it's, here's the money, now, if you mess it up, it's on you, I, I'm just not, I, I'm not opposed to the idea, cause sometimes those headhunters can go get grants that nobody else can, but at the same time, they're not gonna help you manage it unless you pay them.
You know, these two companies will manage the project, they'll manage the grant, they'll actually do the work, they, they work with the engineers all in-house, so they have the engineers, if it's a road project and, or sewer project, whatever, they'll, they're, they're managing the whole thing.
Is charged a fee for that?
Correct.
Above and beyond the fee for the?
No, it wouldn't call it be a cost, we wouldn't have to budget for it, it would, it would be in the grant, they would be the recipient of fees within the grant.
That's unusual, I'm glad to hear that.
Well, and I'm not a hundred percent certain, but that's what I expect, that's what I expect, that is what I expect, we'll learn.
Typically, management is not allowed to be included in a grant, typically.
Correct.
The, the getting the grant is, but not managing it.
So on the, I, I, I'm talking about managing the actual project, so the, the engineer that would oversee it, that, that would be paid for by the grant, but you're talking about oversight of the fiscal matters of the grant?
That is correct.
Okay, we'll learn that, we'll learn that when we get to the consultation.
Yeah, they, a lot of times they have a vested interest in helping you get the grant because they plan on being the company that facilitates the grant, but there's still all those reporting requirements and all that.
Well, and that's the concern about even hiring a grant writer for us today, cause the workload on, in finance, you know, there's a reciprocating or a mirrored image of work that has to happen outside of the grant writer that's gonna add to an already high burden if you did bring on a grants writer, and, um, and it's a lot, as you know, it's a lot of work.
It's huge, it's huge. But if you can bring in half million dollars worth of stuff, that's also huge for the county when we're trying to save as much money as we can, and I, I know that can be done.
Yes, and again, if that be the case, if we're concerned about that, I'm okay with hiring somebody to work under Debbie's leadership, but not somebody over Debbie. Eventually, when Debbie retires, and we do have the opportunity to hire CFO or CPA or combination of, we're probably still gonna have to have some, another person in that role, but I just don't see what we're talking about dollar wise now, I mean, being a steward of taxpayer dollars and looking out for the constituents, I just can't see that. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Tom.
No, that's all right, the county employees have the art money, um, I, I, I'm in complete agreement with that, uh, I think that's a wise idea, I don't know that we have to do it as part of the budget process, but we certainly can, that, there's nothing, cause it's not out of the general fund, so it wouldn't have to be included from that, but we can tie it into that.
I, I, I'm not really worried about it, I just want the county employees to understand that we're gonna try to look out for them and our.
Absolutely.
You know, whether it's, whether it's the three percent, six percent, whatever, I just want them to know that the intentions, and I do want it somewhere recorded, that we will be taking care of them come July one, when the next cycle of this money flows in.
And in the meantime, please don't call and fuss and yell at us, it will happen, I promise, so give us time to work on it.
Is the suggestion that it's for, that this would be for public safety or for everybody?
Across the board.
Across the board. Same thing it was for.
All right, so let's go back to, the only way to eat an elephant's one bite at a time, the C, uh, CPA, CFO, I think we beat that till we can't beat it much more, but we gotta give him direction. Uh, I am, I, unless I am badly mistaken, what I've heard is, we're okay with when Ms. Cromer, uh, decides she would like to retire with replacing, but, uh, not supplanting the staff with that position right now, have I misheard that from, as a consensus, besides Mr. Hip?
Yes.
Reverend Curry, you smiling, go and lay it on me, brother.
Are you, what, what, are you asking me that we don't want to prepare so till she retire?
Yes, that's the question.
With some overlapping time.
With plenty of overlapping time.
I mean, if she retires mid fiscal year, what, what am I supposed to do?
We can make a budget amendment out of reserve, out of the contingency fund or whatever we, I mean, general fund to cover until next year's budget, and then we'll put it in next year's budget.
And that's gonna take three readings, and I don't know how much notice I'm gonna give, and, uh, it's gonna take six months to hire somebody?
Debbie Sidney will ask her to give us at least a six month notice, we'll also consult with her, contract with her for a couple days a week to make sure the transition's smooth.
Anybody else wanna be heard on that? The next is, uh, moving the clerk to council money back into admin, to the, I'm sorry, back into the county council budget. The, the consequences of doing that are that that removes the administrative assistant to the county administrator. Uh, is that, let's, let's let everyone be heard on that.
I agree.
Wi- agree with what, I'm sorry?
Moving the money back to the county council.
Okay. And thereby eliminating an adminis- uh, assistant, to the administrative assistant to the county administrator?
Well, my thing is, if, if that position is needed, uh, then we need to have it.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Reader, right now, the county council budget includes enough money for a full-time clerk to council, and the administrator's budget includes enough money for an administrative assistant.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay. Mr. Shealy, we'll start on the end and work our way back. Right now, both positions are funded.
Right now, both positions are funded.
That is correct.
Well, I don't have a problem with having both positions.
Okay, Mr. Livingston?
I will not support it unless economic development has their position also.
I'm coming to that. Ms. Airwood?
Um, I'll support it, um, too, but I, I wanna see what's gonna happen with economic development.
Okay, Mr. Hip?
I know about award, cause I usually come to you last. I'll support it.
I, I think he, I think you desperately need some help, I think we promised you some help, I know that, um, at times, it doesn't feel like it, so, but, uh, I hope that this will enable you, and I too would support, keeping the budget as is as related to those two positions and giving you an administrative assistant. The human resources and payroll, we just addressed that by doing that, correct, Mr. Livingston?
As in?
We, the, the idea was to make the payroll specialist his part-time assistant, so by giving, by saying we would support that, we don't need to address that any further?
Yeah, and I'm okay with the, uh, the admin assistant, long as we don't put the hundred and three thousand plus benefits and all for the CPA, CFO.
Well, I think we addressed that, right?
I, I'm, I put a question mark by that.
Okay, I'll, let me come back, let me get this last one, we got one other outstanding item, if my math is right, and that is, for twenty-nine thousand more dollars, we could fund the economic development, put everybody's mind at ease, and then?
No, sir, the, uh, the savings is twenty-nine thousand, but we'd have to eliminate the interns for fifteen thousand.
So if we eliminated the interns, put twenty-nine thousand with it, if my math right, we could put that part-time position back?
It's a full-time position.
I'm sorry, full-time position back, and then we could do the study, and if they say we don't need it, then we wouldn't need it any, then we could deal with that, right?
Sure, aim, as you wish.
Okay. Mr. Shealy?
I'm in favor of a full-time economic position.
Okay, Mr. Livingston?
Definitely.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Hip? Nope, okay.
I support full-time position.
Okay, Mr. Reader?
A full-time position.
Okay.
Got it.
All right, so that takes that back, so that leaves us with, uh, back to the CPA, CFO, um, we're, we're beating that horse and it won't get up, it's never gonna get up, cause it's dead, but we'll try. All right, what, what is the question mark of, that we have about?
Well, I heard, I thought I heard, uh, uh, not a consensus.
I don't think you have a consensus, I, I know.
Right, so I don't know what motion to prepare for you, but I could just not prepare one and you can deal with it at second reading, and a motion can be made at that time.
You, you would need to prepare a motion to remove it.
To remove it.
At this point, since we've already passed first reading.
Yes.
So I think you would need to have a motion to remove it.
Right, but I'm not hearing a consensus that, that's the motion that?
We'll go down the line and make sure, um, you wanna remove that, leave it, replace, when Ms. Cromer decides to retire, remove it for now, is that?
Correct.
Okay, and I wanna put words in anybody's mouth, you, you say what's on your heart.
Remove and replace.
Okay.
When, when De- when Ms. Cromer retires.
Okay.
With overlap.
With overlap.
With overlap?
Yep.
Ms. Airwood?
That's what I want.
Okay.
Remove and replace.
All right, Mr. Hip?
Um, who's defining the overlap, I mean, I'm not sure, we, we talk about overlap.
I think once we know more about the retirement, that Mr.
If she gives me a four weeks' notice, and it takes six months to hire somebody, we're not gonna have any overlap.
Right, that, that's what, that, that overlap sounds good until you try to put your arms around it and define it.
Define practicality of it, gotcha.
But, uh, you know, if, if it's consensus of council not to have it, then, then it is consensus.
Reverend Curry?
Replace it with the overlap.
Okay, Mr. Reader?
My only concern is that we have the money when the time.
I, I think there's, that's valid, because we've budgeted for it, planning for a retirement that is very much imminent in the next fiscal year, and if we take it out, I don't know, we'll have to take it from fund balance, which is not a practice that I really wanna, wanna have to do. I'd rather budget it and not use it for six months out of the year than, um, to try and make it up later in the year, or budget for half of it, budget for six months, I wouldn't be able to make the hire before January one.
I'm not opposed to budgeting for partial.
That's what I was saying, maybe, maybe, maybe we get a, 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 a cat, yeah, let's, let's have some kind of a negotiation here where we fund that job.
You're right, it's not gonna be hired tomorrow.
So, uh.
I'm, I'm not objecting to have a partial budget here.
All right, so I got half a year. Mr. Livingston?
I'd rather pull it out of the fund balance and then budget it full and then next go round.
Okay, Ms. Airwood?
Uh, great July, half a year.
Okay, Mr. Hip? Half a year?
Fine.
Okay, which, which one's fine, we got two options on it, Dave?
We want to say partly fund it.
Half, but one option is ha- fund it half a year, the other option is not fund it and pull it from full, fund balance when the time.
For half a year.
Half a year, Mr. Reader?
Half a year.
Okay.
That works really well, because we can fund the ED, the economic development position with the savings from a half a year, so.
Okay.
So I can make that work, I'm saying I can make that work really clearly for the budget.
With that consolation, I'm okay with a half year.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
I know y'all tired, cause I'm tired.
Now, we'll keep, uh, fifty-five thousand parks from the rest of the year.
I've been here from nine til midnight.
Oh, I've been here, I've been, I was, I've been here at midnight, and I've been in the courthouse for a criminal court till four o'clock in the morning, and had to be back at nine o'clock, right, Sheriff?
On the master, I have a couple questions, only one or two.
No, 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 it's not your turn, no, I'm sorry. Let me go down the line, are you, any other items you wanna bring, we kinda took Buddy's list and run with it, are there any other items you wanna address?
Absolutely not.
I didn't mean to call you out, but I called you out, so.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
And I apologize for taking the run with it, but when he told us the other night that we would have to make the amendments, I was darned by, sure that I was gonna have my position stated well.
And well, you did.
And well, and great job, you did.
Mr. Hip? Reverend Curry?
Good go.
Mr. Reader, is there any further questions from you about any budget item?
Now, we did, we did add the IT position, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, no other item then?
Now you can have your question, sir.
I think I know the answer to this, but, uh, eliminating the parks master plan in this budget, is, I think there's consensus for council on that.
There is consensus for that.
And.
And let me, may I, let me just address that, since Jesse's here, uh, give me one minute, just sit back, I, I can talk, I'm a, I'm a preacher on the side, so I can do this. My, my, my mindset in eliminating is not supportive, is not supporting recreation, I love recreation, you know that, it's, if we do a study and we don't have the money to do anything with it, by the time we do get the money, it's gonna be stale and we're gonna need another study, and so that's my mindset in not doing one right now. I, I'm still an ardent supporter of recreation, as I know everybody up here is, and so, don't, don't take that as not support, there's, there's, there's method in the madness on that one, okay?
Jesse, I, I too, you know, I'm for recreation, but there's so many things that's been on the table, especially with, uh, fire rescue, things that we may have to go fund, you know, we can't get enough volunteers a lot of time in the day or different times, and it's been out there for a long time, so we know we're not gonna be able to raise the budget, or don't want to impose a lot of, um, struggle for, for our citizens, we, we gotta watch our money, so we'll work through it, and I'm sure one day down the road, we'll have a bigger recreation department, but.
I hope so, you know my heart is that I hope so.
But at the same time, we need to have it for the whole county, I mean.
That's right. Anybody, I know everybody up here support, that, we've had conversations, there's nobody up here that doesn't support it, if we don't have that money sitting there, again, it gets stale before you know it. Mr. Inglissey?
Yes, sir, and, um, we talked today, actually, about finding some alternative ways to fund that master plan, so hopefully we can implement one of those and.
Absolutely.
We'll come and let you know how progress on that.
Could be a grant writer could get with the PAR grants or something and find us some money.
One idea was a six K at Lynch's Park to raise money, and that could be used for master plan, we also met with, um, Soil and Water, wanna do a fair at the old fairgrounds, and, um, they, they have an interest in parks and may contribute the, some of the revenue from that event to parks, um, if we partner with them, so there's some alternatives out there, so we'll be pursuing those in, in, in light of cutting the, the master plan.
Okay.
The other one was the grants writer, I'm not sure I got direction on the grants writer.
My understanding was yes. Yes, Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Livingston? Mr. Airwood? Mr. Hip?
And we said that if it doesn't work out, we'll.
Okay. Uh, I'm, one of those that would like for us to use the contract service first, to see whether or not there's, uh, enough, uh, to be gained, you know, to support a full-time grant writer, but that being said.
You follow that.
But that being said, if, uh.
And the only point I would have to that is that they aren't gonna take these little fire depart- and I say little, I don't mean that, cause they're big help, Tommy, but some of the smaller fire department grants, there's not enough in that for them to jump on, and I think that could really be a help in some of those areas.
So I'm not objecting to.
Not enough to beat on that bone for.
No, no.
I won't, I won't object to it.
And that doesn't stop any of our department heads from trying to pursue.
Yeah, if they wanna do their own, they can, but give them some expertise in-house that could help them write it and manage it.
One thing that will be created by that, though, every grant that potentially has it, comes in, has a source to come into, one person who could then take the smaller ones and divvy them back and say, here is something, so we will have a.
I need that from you.
Yes.
Yes.
It's almost like a grants coordinator.
Yes.
They might not take on every detail of each grant.
Mr., uh, Captain, is it Captain, thank you, I'm sorry, I wasn't being funny, I forgot, uh, and Captain Chapton testified that a lot of getting grants is building relationships with those grant folks ahead of time, and knowing who they are and knowing what they're looking for as well, so I think having one person would help a lot with that as well.
Please be mindful that that's, I'm sorry.
I'm, I had not called on Mr. Reader, may I give him, Mr. Reader? On the grants position?
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
All right.
So, please be mindful that that's a ninety-three thousand dollar position, and it may be that there's still, uh, there's, it might not come out. So, please be mindful that that's a ninety-three thousand dollar position and it may be that there's still, I, there's, it might not come out tax, without a tax increase. It may be somewhere between one and, point one and point five um, mils in light of that salary.
Now, when you say ninety-three thousand dollars for a grant writer, does that include benefit?
That includes everything.
Benefits and all, okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
And that's on the high end, cause we wanna be competitive.
About to stop my heart.
With fringe and it's also on the high end, cause again, we wanna get somebody with experience that can hit the ground running and we may not spend that much, so.
Gotcha.
Um, last question was on the yard container. I think that we're okay with removing the yard container at Seabert Road and that would save, like, it's the only one that has one and it was supposed to be temporary after a storm event and it's just sat out there, but it's costing us about sixteen thousand dollars a year, so.
Are, are the citizens using it or?
They're using it, but it's costing us and nobody else has one, none of them have convenience.
Uh, I gotcha, alright. Yes, then I'm okay. Remove?
Remove.
Mr. Livingston?
Just going back to the, the half-year CPA CFA, or CFP. Don't want that position hired in six months out, just to be hiring it.
Uh, couldn't agree more.
Understood.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Ten-four.
Couldn't agree more.
Message received.
I was actually gonna say that, believe it or not. Now, about the thing. Yard container.
See it?
Ms. Airwood, Mr. Hip? I don't even know what it is. I gotta take that recommendation off. That's what we got y'all for, Mr. Reader.
Eliminate.
Eliminate, alright. Get rid of something I don't know what it is, that's good.
It's good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all.
We say that tongue-in-cheek as well. Um, somebody else? Anybody else? Yes, yes. Not technically vote, just give advice.
Uh, one last housekeeping item, Mr. Chairman. Um, on your capital uh, budget, um, the second reading will include, um, it won't change any of the dollars, but we had originally budgeted an ambulance remount for, let me make sure I got my language right, for EMS, which is the hospital. They're getting a remount in this fiscal year's budget, so we've moved that remount to rescue and um, doubling up on an order which is gonna save a few thou- twenty-five thousand dollars. So, um, and there was also some savings we were able to find on the brush truck and that enabled us to fund the life pack that the hospital did request. So we were able to get them their forty-six thousand dollar life pack, but no, no ambulance remount, because that was changed to rescue budget. So that was a change after discussing with Tom, right, Tommy? Did I get all that right?
So that's two ambulances remount, is that?
No, sir. I'm, that was a misstatement in my presentation. It's one ambulance remount. I, I.
Where does that put us on that equipment then?
I mean, we're, not where we wanna be.
Not nowhere close.
Tommy? Yes.
Yes.
I mean, we answer for them both, so we need to know both.
That's right.
Okay. ARP money could be used for that, couldn't it?
It could.
Okay.
If we wanted to add an ambulance, you could and.
Folks, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, this is my opinion, but I'm gonna tell you, there is nobody, everybody out there paid a price during COVID. But our medical people and, and our ambulances, man, you talk about having to run call after call after call after call. And so, um, uh, our law enforcement, all those folks, and so if we, if we can look at the possibility in saving that kinda money and do something with ARP money, I'd, I'd like to see us investigate that.
We got more thing.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, cause when you look, and, and some of these resc- I mean, ambulances all have to be cleaned before they can make another run. I mean, we, we, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, not some of them, all of them have to be cleaned before they can make another run. I mean, we, I don't see why the American Rescue Fund money cannot take the burden off the taxpayer dollars for that.
And that's what we did in this budget, with seven-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollar allocation of ARP for public safety purchases. But um, just kinda holding in reserve because the detention center is a big question mark and so that's one big capital project out there that could be used for ARP money to make up any difference. Um, and obviously, there's lots of need, so um. We, we felt like, as a matter of priority, the rescue needed the ambulance this year. The hospital's getting one in this current fiscal year, so next it, it's their turn to get one.
Gotcha. Okay.
One, one other housekeeping matter is, um, in the budget ordinance and the ordinance document, at, at second reading, we did, um, I think you're all aware of the discussion with the city on the transfer fees. We wanna make it clear that there's a fifty percent discount for year one. If that did not get in the first reading um, of the ordinance, so we will include that in the second reading of the ordinance. I think everybody's on board with that from what I've, the feedback I've gotten and that's how the budget, the numbers reflect that, but we wanna make sure that the ordinance reflects that one-year fifty percent discount.
Okay.
One more question. We had um, the solicitor and the public defender asking for funds. Did we find out if the ARP can be used for that?
It can be.
I'd like to see us take care of that.
One-year only.
One-year only, I'm on board. For each of them, one-year only.
One-year only.
Seventy thousand for each, one-year only, okay.
Uh, let me go down, I mean, I think we.
I hear you.
I think we should just have a vote on that. Um, that'd be easier since that's ARP money, that might be easier. Not here, obviously, we can't vote in this forum, but um, at a meeting next week. Can we get that thrown on the agenda?
If we put it in their, their, in their budget with the notation.
I got you.
It'll be in the budget.
Okay, alright, that sounds good. Um, the only other thing I had, as I mentioned it, and I don't, uh, just to kinda talk about it in a work session so that we can kind of address it, um, is the uh, purchasing ordinance itself, and I think, Jay, that would require some additional readings. Is it twenty-five thousand dollars for anything to come to us. Uh, again, I think in today's economy, that's, that's a lot to ask our department heads to keep having to run back up here every time they want something. If we've already budgeted, I understand if it's outside of the budget, but if you've already budgeted for, we've kind of already said okay to it in prin- principle, but I do think we need to know what's going on.
I just hope we don't have a big surprise. We'll try to buy this fire truck, this.
Oh, I'm.
I mean.
You're gonna get a surprise, not a nice one.
Cause the brush truck went up. Fifty percent, not in fifty percent, thirty, forty percent.
Fifty-six thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Crystal, the twenty-five thousand, is that now for anything budgeted or not budgeted, or just?
It is.
Okay.
I'm good with it if it's already been budgeted.
Go, jump, what do you think, fifty if it's already been budgeted?
As long as it's been budgeted, I'm good with it.
Yeah. Twenty, eh, twenty-five if it has not been and fifty if it has been. Is that what, would that be?
That's right for me.
I'm okay with that.
Mr. Hip?
Yes. Twenty-five.
If it's not budgeted.
Unbudgeted, fifty budgeted.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Okay, so can y'all prepare that for us as well to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is that, is that for next week, Mr. Chairman?
I, I don't think we can.
Yeah, we need more time to.
Yeah.
Cause there's, Tommy's asked for something else with procurement and I don't know whether, so I'd rather it's not piecemeal, cause that still takes three readings.
Yes, no. No, I understand that's, eh, by ordinance, that'll take some additional readings, but I do think from a practical standpoint for staff and, and for us, that, that would be a good move.
I don't think anybody has a crystal ball for this, but I don't know how much money we have budgeted for law enforcement and all of the other departments from the standpoint of gas. I think that's one of those things that, uh, Christopher, I think you got notation somewhere in there regarding that, if I'm not bad wrong, but I, I'm not sure how much we got in there, but that is something that we may have to adjust as the year goes on, if you're talking four, five dollar a gallon gas. I mean, so, that's another surprise factor that could potentially raise its head and bite us.
If I remember correctly, there's a reserve setback for that? Okay.
Yeah, the budget amendment um, kinda got us cut up for this year and then we, we projected based on sort of the current state of the affair, so. Possibly, I'm the eternal optimist, gas prices will come down and, you know, and we overbudgeted, but we're, we're planning for, for the worst, so.
Not only that, but to our law enforcement with the Columbiana and the Casey and all the things that are going on, thank y'all for what you do every day. Um, we're so appreciative for your efforts and um, we definitely, we may have to be revisiting more law enforcement officers if things keep going like they are, are going as well. So Sheriff Foster and staff, um, kudos and for all that you do. Anybody else on council have anything?
I got like fifty pages of notes.
Comments or requests, I'm sorry, public comments is next. Uh, signed up is Chris Johnson.
I mean, it's real brief, that we're confirmed that that ambulance is coming to the rescue squad? That was in the budget.
Uh, that will be.
Tommy? Okay.
Yeah, I, I think I can pretty much withdraw ninety percent of what I was gonna say.
Okay.
And I would caution y'all that, as behalf of the chairman of the board, um, Lake Murray's ambulance is twenty years old. It's in as bad, if not getting as bad a shape as ours is, while you have six-point-three million left in ARP funds, that truck probably needs to be replaced sooner than later as well, if that funds can be found.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. Now, comments or requests from the county administrator? Comments or requests from county council? Mr. Shealy?
I'm good.
Mr. Livingston?
Mr. Johnson's point well taken. If we can take it out of ARP and not put it on the taxpayer dollars and mileage, I'd much rather do it sooner than later.
Absolutely. Ms. Airwood? Reverend Curry?
Thank everybody for the hard work.
Mr. Reader?
Uh, no comment.
Mr. Hip?
I think I've said plenty of, no, no additional comments.
I know it, it's been long, but it really hasn't been that long. In a couple hours, we made some incredible strides and so I commend this group of men and women for rolling up their sleeves and getting the job done. I commend staff for uh, excellent preparation and getting us ready uh, to make difficult decisions. Uh, I don't recall who said it at this point, cause we've all said a good bit, but there is nobody gonna leave here happy all the way around. There, there are winners and losers in every budget. They weren't set up for everybody to win or everybody to lose, so. Um, but I do appreciate it, appreciate all the efforts that have gone forward and I think this gives us a really good picture of what the county should look like moving ahead. Alright, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Shealy? So, get my Mr. Livingston, all in favor, but, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Reader, before we vote, I didn't give you a chance to talk, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, I had, I didn't have any comments.
Okay, now we got a motion and a second is their discussion. All in favor by show of hands, Mr. Reader?
Uh.
Unanimous and we are adjourned.